Our business. So as Chair of the Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is also a physical location to observe and look contemporaneously to this meeting at the New Market, New Hampshire Town Hall Auditorium. In accordance with this emergency order, I am confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting in person and by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and/or electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for the electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessarily participate in the following website: or phone number 1-646-558-8656 and password 9552718105. This meeting is also to be aired on New Market Channel 13 for those wishing to watch on their TV and streaming at And B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Board at C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with the access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-659-3617, extension 1321, or email at channelfourteen@newmarketnewhampshire.gov or newmarketnh.gov. D) If the public is unable to access the meeting, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note, all votes are taken and the meeting should be done by a roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So we will start with Val Shelton.
Present and, and alone in the room.
Sarah Finch. No Sarah?
No Sarah.
Jane Ford.
Present and alone.
Mikael Zahorek.
Present and alone.
Ted Sealy said he would not be here this evening. Bill Dusset.
Present and alone.
Scott Blackstone.
Scott?
Scott?
Scott.
Thought I saw him on the screen.
Present and alone.
Perfect. Thank you.
Jamie Bruton.
Present and alone.
And Eric Bodeman, I am present and alone. And Diane Hardy?
I'm here. Thank you.
Are you alone?
I'm alone.
Alright, excellent. Well, please, uh, saying the pledge of allegiance then. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So first on the agenda is appointments to Chair and Vice Chair. So do we have any nominations?
I nominate Eric Bodeman to serve as Chair.
Are there any other nominations? For Chair? Alright, hearing none, we will go through the roll call vote.
But you need a second on the nomination.
Oh, we need a second on the nomination. You're right, Val.
I will second that.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, roll call. Jane Ford.
Yes, I support it.
Mikael Zahorek, you will be sitting in this evening for Sarah. Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Scott Blackstone?
Aye.
Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
And Eric Bodeman, I vote aye.
And I vote aye.
Oh, and Val also. Okay, yeah, Val. Alright, Vice Chair, is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
I nominate Val Shelton.
I will second that. Is, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will start with Jane Ford.
Aye.
Aye.
Bill Dusset? Scott Blackstone? Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
Eric Bodeman, I vote aye. And Val Shelton?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for 21 minutes. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, who was that who seconded it?
Jamie?
Yep.
Jamie, I'm sorry. Any discussion, comments, changes? Val?
Diane?
Yep.
On page three, line 102, it states Diane Hardy said this is a unique application and is the first time the Planning Board has received a request to build a single-family home in a Class 6 road. I think you meant is not the first time.
Not the first, and that's correct. Thank you for finding that.
That was my only comment.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we will in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
Scott Blackstone?
Aye.
Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Mikael Zahorek?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye. Eric, one quick thing, there seems to be a comment in the chat. I don't know if you guys saw that. I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but I thought I would just mention.
Oh, yes. When I, when we get there, yeah, yes.
Alright, good. I just want to make sure that you guys saw that. That's all. I'm sorry, to be real, sorry.
That's fine. So Val Shelton?
Aye.
And Eric Bodeman, I vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next on the agenda is, well, we don't, public comments, which I skipped over. So public comments are for commenting on anything that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody in the public that would care to comment? Have any public comments?
Can, can Tim confirm if there's anyone from the public at the Town Hall?
Tim?
Yes, there are currently two people. Can anybody hear me? Hello, hello? Hey, Adam, do me a favor.
We just lost Tim.
Well, hang on, let's send him a message then.
Okay.
You heard me? You heard me coming over here?
No, that's fine. That's a good point, Val.
Can anybody hear me right now? Diane? Can you hear me? Diane, can you hear me?
Yes.
Diane, hello? Can you hear me? Perfect, there we are. Okay, there are a couple of people here. I don't think that they're for public comment though.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of that, Tim. Could you repeat the last comment?
Uh, there are a couple of people here, but I don't think they're here for public comment.
Okay.
Could you, Tim, can you confirm that? Just to make sure. I would probably agree with you, but we should confirm that if we can.
Other ones, you want to make any public comment? Would you like to make any public comments to the Board? Not currently.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll close the public comment at, I have 7:11. Okay, um, one other thing I'd like to just notify, well, we'll do, they wouldn't want to get there. Next on the agenda is Dennis and Arlene Pratt, Notice of Merger at 7981 Dame Road, Tax Map R2, Lots 9 and 9A. Is there anybody, Diane, do you want to just walk us through this? This is fairly routine?
Yeah, this is a fairly routine request. The Planning Board, one of their responsibilities is to approve mergers. And we have a piece of property that is currently owned by and there's two lots there, Lot 9A and Lot 9B, I think it is. And he has requested that the town merge those lots. And usually this is done for taxation purposes. And he has filed the paperwork with the office and it does meet our requirements. So all we're looking for this evening is authorization to the Chairman of the Planning Board to sign the merger form. And then that can be recorded at the Register of Deeds. And of course, if anyone has questions, I think Mr. Pratt is here, or he said he was going to be present to answer any questions. I don't see his name up here, but if he is, if there are questions, please ask them and we'll see if we can get some answers for you. Thank you.
Do any Board members have any questions? Val?
Yes. Diane, he is, his signature is not witnessed.
Okay. Is there a line on the form for that, Val? I don't have the form in front of me. I can look at it.
Yeah, there is. So, um, Eric, I'll make a motion after the Board has any comments.
Sure, okay. Do any Board members have any comments on this? Okay. Hearing none. Oh, Scott, did Scott have something to say? No? Okay, Val?
Are there any public, no public comments, right?
Real quick one, Diane, this does not create any non-conformity with zoning by merging?
No, it does not.
Okay, does anybody from the public have anything to say relative to this? Don't hear anything? Okay, Val?
I'll mo, I'll make a motion to authorize the Chair of the Planning Board to execute the Notice of Merger for carousels located at 7981 Dame Road, Tax Map R2, Lots 9 and 9A, subject to the owner resigning the Notice of Merger with signature being witnessed per the form.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Dusset? Any discussion? Okay, I will take the roll call. Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Bill Dusset?
Aye.
I think we lost them.
Nope.
He's a little frozen.
There he is.
Wow, my, my computer just froze.
Aye.
Thank you, Bill. Wow, um, Mikael Zahorek?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
Val Shelton?
Aye.
And Eric Bodeman votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next one, I'll read and then we'll, we'll discuss a little bit. Request from Ty, John Tyson of Hampton, New Hampshire, who has purchased, and who has a purchase and sales agreement for property at 75 Neil Mill Road, pursuant to RSA 674:41. He is requesting permission from the Town Council to build a single-family home, a driveway access for a single-family home at the property at 75 Neil Mill, New Market, New Hampshire, 03857, at Tax Map R7 Lot 1. The Town Council has requested review and comment from the Planning Board regarding this request, and the Planning Board is holding a public hearing on this request at its meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 16th, 2021, in order to receive commentary from the Butters, the public and other stakeholders who may have an interest in this request. Now, before we go any further, I guess technically this does not have to be a public hearing. However, we do have an issue with all the remaining agenda items. There was a glitch in the posting where by the top of the posting, when it was posted first, it's Tuesday, March 16th, 2020. And so technically, I believe Diane, these weren't posted in time to be properly posted. Is that correct?
That is correct. What I've been advised by legal counsel is that this glitch, if you will, where there's an inconsistency in the title heading is different. It's clear as you read the text that the meeting was meant to be advertised for March 16th, 2021. He's referred this to as a scribe's era, if you will, and that it's apparent in looking at the notice that there's no, it's clear when the hearing is. We will have another hearing on this application at some later. In this particular case, it is requirement of the RSA, so I think we can go forward this evening. We have several people here who have an interest in speaking tonight. So I think we are okay to go forward and hear public comment and try to address concerns to the extent we can. And that at the next meeting, we'll get that glitch taken care of. When we identified that there was a glitch on the notice, we immediately sent out a second notice to all the Butters who are supposed to be, that we notified as a courtesy. We also sent in a new public notice to the paper. And that's what we were advised to do by our legal counsel. So I think we're okay. Because I know we have a lot of people here who are anxious to present their point of view this evening. So hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. I'm not so, quite so sure what the right process is. Do any Board members have any comments relative to this? For this particular item? I think it's, seeing this didn't have to be a public hearing, I guess I'm okay with going forward with this one. Val, any comments?
No, I'm fine to hear it.
Bill, any comments?
No, no, it's good.
Okay, Jamie?
I, with the amount of people that are here, then the notice was clear enough to get this many who want to speak, so yes, I'm okay with going forward.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's okay with it. Mikael?
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Jane?
I'm good.
Okay, so we will Yes?
Is the applicant fine with this being heard?
I see that the applicant's attorney is here.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, my name is James Scully. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and we are satisfied with the provisions of the notice, and we are happy to move forward this evening.
Great, thank you. Alright, so I think we should start by having the applicant walk us through
Chairman, before we start, we've had a request by one of the members of the public to clarify what the ground rules are, if you will, for comments, public comments, and there's any limitations, I guess, on time and so forth. And maybe you could clarify that for the benefit of the public who's new to our process. Thank you.
Sure, so the process will be that we will listen to a presentation by the applicant or their, and/or their representatives. Then the Board will have the ability to ask any questions they may want to ask, and then I'll open it up to the public. I personally restrict the time for public comment, but I would hope, well, you know, if people start going too long, I will try to, you know, rein it in a little bit, you know, four, three, four minutes should be plenty of time for somebody to talk about a project such as this. And, and I'd like to just advise everybody, let's not try to repeat the same comment a million times. If we can, that would help expedite it because we've got a bunch of other things to deal with. So, but we want to give everybody a fair, a fair chance to speak their mind. So with that, we will start with the applicant. Do you want to walk us through the plan, please?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Heidi, for seeing us tonight. Again, this is a formal hearing. We did talk last on the night, you know, as a kind of an indirect discussion on the project, just to bring us in. And then we did schedule this public hearing. Again, my name for the record is Chris Albert, owner of CSA Environmental Consultants out of Nottingham, New Hampshire, the project manager for the team. What I wanted to do, since this is kind of a Zoom meeting and a public hearing, I wanted the, uh, the owners, applicants, and attorney just to introduce themselves. So, uh, it's on the record. So if, maybe James, if you wanted to start first and move through the group?
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry about that. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Attorney James Scully. I'm from Morris Law Office in Hampton, New Hampshire, here on behalf of the applicant. John, why don't you go ahead?
I'm the one that calls all the feedback, John Tyson. Thank you, thank you for considering our application. And I'll mute right away.
Hi, Sue Spinelli. I'm co-applicant with my husband, John Tyson. And as we mentioned in one of the other meetings, we're looking at the lot and appreciate your hearing our request for approval for my daughter, Julie Tyson.
Hi, I'm Julie Tyson. Just as my mom said, I'm happy to go along with whatever we need to, to make this property hopefully work out for us. I'm currently in Vermont, but I am really looking forward to relocating to the area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Diane, is there a way to put the drawing up on, or did you want me to try to take control and bring that up, or what are your thoughts, Diane, and Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'd like you to put the drawing up. I think that, that would be helpful to, especially people that haven't
If I can do that. That's, uh, the approved septic plan is up on the screen right now. Again, I'll, I'll get the other one up in a second. Water technology. Yeah, maybe have to cut out and bring back. But again, so, uh, this is the House proposed house lot. Again, it's on Neil Mill Road, as we all discussed, it's a Class 6 road. From the gates and bars that are there presently, we're looking to upgrade the existing Class 6 road 785 feet to this entrance point right here with a 14-foot wide gravel road. Again, I've kind of run through as far as keeping everything in the right of way. We did note on Uh, again, I've kind of run through as far as uh, keeping everything in the right of way. Uh, we did note on the other plan, there are a few trees that need to get cut down. Um. Is that, can you see that one? That one pop up?
Yep.
Yeah, no, it's, it's all up there. So again, here's the uh, the gate, uh, where the paved section uh, from a pavement to the class six road. So again, we're gonna go past the Old Lee Road, class six road. Uh, I did note, uh, walking it as far as the survey of what, uh, one large boulder that would have to be hammered. Uh, there's one big thirty-inch bolt pine right here that would have to be get, taken down. But most of the trees, uh, we'd able to be able to s- to stay within the right of way. Uh, coming down to the lower section, we did uh, show as far as a fire truck uh, turning radius and what we're proposing is a fifty by seventy uh, gravel pad area uh, for the fire trucks to be able to get into the site. Uh, we're proposing at least eleven hundred and fifty feet of underground conduit, starting from that last utility pole uh, on the paved section of Neil Mill Road. Coming down the center of the roadway, I know there's been some discussion, which we'll talk about as far as trees. Um. What I am proposing is at least a, a little bit of a, of a conifer buffer with the house. Again, the, the four corners of the proposed house are staked out. Uh, the septic system was approved by the Department of Environmental Services. We do know about the old family cemetery, which we're showing in this lower tree and according to state statute, we're maintaining that, that twenty-five foot no cut, no buffer uh, around the cemetery. Um, this is really something that, you know, uh, I'll, I'll put up the cell plan. Uh, Duane, you apologize, but I, I kind of put that plan up just to kind of give everyone a reference point of where the proposed house is located. Uh, again, we did receive the uh, comments last week from uh, Duane Hyde in Selt, uh, that's part of our review process. And I do have uh, Elaine Snyder's letter uh, from uh, her to the Conservation Commission with her comments. Uh, and then we do our Arlen Chaffee's uh, comments that just came out. I'm, I think Arlen was gonna talk tonight. A little about the trails. Excuse me, I did talk with Kyle, uh, Diane from uh, Stratford Regional Planning Commission. He really felt it was a, a local uh, decision, uh, and I guess if you wanted to talk to him in email, he could kind of review that. I did talk to Julie at RPC about the project. Uh, I haven't received any comments back from Julie. Uh, I don't know if you've, if, at this point, it's a town or if they're on tonight. I did talk with Glenn Greenwood, uh, the town planner for the town of Newfields and, and went over the project with him. Hasn't provided any comments at this point. I, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, you guys have kind of looked at overall the project, you know, it's controversial, it is, is a highly trafficked recreational trail. Um, you know, I, I think, you know, after tonight's public comments, we're, we're definitely gonna want to schedule a uh, a site walk with the Conservation Commission. Again, we did meet with them last week to kind of introduce the project. I, I think this is, this is a, you know, a public comment period. So, Mr. Chairman, I think I would leave it up to uh, you as the, the board members and the public comment to get that feedback, feedback from uh, from the public. And then, you know, what we'll do is we'll kind of like, you know, digest all the information, especially all the recent letters that we've received uh, and respond appropriately and, and try to set up a, a, a site walk. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Um, let's start with board members. Do any board members have um, any comments or questions at this point?
I, I do, Eric.
Go ahead, Bill.
Um, Mr. Albert, uh, when will a professional engineer be designing this proposed driveway?
Well, it's, it's a matter of, of a request to the board. I, I think there was discussion about having a licensed land surveyor and a licensed engineer. Uh, I mean, I, I think that's something where, this is a formal hearing, so if, if it's the board's decision that they want to have that uh, re- requirement, then that would be done. Uh, we just did get the uh, scope of services from your peer review, uh, engineering consultant to review the project. So again, that's something that we would, we would take back from the planning board's comments tonight and have that completed.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll let the rest of the board speak on.
People that are there.
But, but I believe.
Yeah, Lenny's in there.
Put Lenny on.
He, he doesn't have the camera.
Could I ask, could I ask? Could I ask people, like, I'm hearing some, some other conversation while Mr. Dusset was talking, if, if you're on the screen and you're not, um, the person speaking, could you please mute yourself?
Sorry.
That's okay.
So, Mr. Albert, you, you've been doing this for a long time. You, you know the professional engineer is required to design a driveway within a town road.
Well, I don't know if there's an RSA to that fact. I've, I've done them before on class six roads, but again, that's, that's the planning board and, and the select board's uh, discretion on that. So I'll, I'll leave that up to your, your uh, privy.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Um, any other questions at this point?
Eric?
Yes.
Um, question, the fourteen-foot gravel road, do you have any input from um, the fire department on that or?
It's my, it's, it's my understanding that uh, this will go through a full TRC comment period uh, with police, fire and road, uh, as far as looking at that.
So you don't, you don't have anything yet?
I'm sorry?
You don't have anything yet?
No, that, that's gonna be part of Diane's, is setting up that process with TRA to, to move forward after tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make two comments?
Sure.
Um, one is that I am putting together a list of additional materials that we will need to start the TRC process. And I have gone through all of the comments from the public, all the planning board comments. And on my list of items to request of the applicant and Mr. Albert is that indeed that the roadway, the driveway be designed by a professional engineer, which means it needs to be stamped. And we also would like to see a land survey of the right of way so that we have a, can, can do a full engineering study um, of the adequacy of the road. And as Mr. uh, mentioned, we do have an engineer. Um, we're ready to enter into an agreement with them to move forward with that. And I have provided a copy of that proposal to Mr. Albert and to our chairman. So uh, I just wanted to uh, arrest any concerns about the engineering or the lack thereof of engineering details. Uh, fire department, I believe that Rick Malaski, of course, as our fire chief will be on the TRC. Eric Bodeman, I think you had a comment um, at the last meeting about the adequacy of the turning radius. And I don't know if that's been changed, but that's something certainly we'll be looking at um, as part of the re- technical review of the application.
Yes.
Those are my comments at this point. Thank you.
Okay, do any other board members have any comments?
Just a quick one, Eric.
Go ahead, Bill.
I just don't want anybody to misunderstand what Diane said. She did not say that the town has an engineer that is going to design this road. We have an engineer that's gonna review their design of this road.
That is correct. That is absolutely correct. Any other board members have any questions, comments? Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just make a comment on behalf of the applicant? This is James Scully.
Sure.
Uh, just for the record, I just wanted to make notice that this entire review process is based upon six seventy-four um, colon forty-one, section one C. Um, which is basically the requirement for a building or the erection of a building off of a class six highway. Um, and it's provided that this review is based upon a planning board review, but the ultimate decision rests with the governing body of the municipality. Um, so I just wanted to note that for the record, that, that the reason we're here is for review and comment by the planning board, but the ultimate decision will less rest with the governing body of the, of the municipality.
That, that's a good point. That is correct, Mr. Scully. And obviously, our, our decision will, will be based on working through whatever engineering issues or comments we have, so I agree.
Absolutely. I, I just wanted to steer public comment, just in case anybody thought that the decision or, or final decisions would rest this evening, that, that certainly is not the case.
No, that's a, that's, that's a valid point. I'm glad you brought that up. Alright, now, so now I think we need to open this up. Yes, go ahead.
Just to be clear, the planning board does not make a decision on this. It's not even an application. Our role is to provide comments to the town council.
Correct.
So once we have enough information that we feel that, that we have the ability to provide in, uh, informed comments, then we would forward those comments to the town council.
That's correct. That is correct. Alright, so, um, you just like, ask everybody to, to bear with me here. We're going to open up this to, to the public. Um, and I know Arlen JP wanted to speak. Arlen, do you want to go first?
Uh, yeah, if we could get the uh, screen unshared. Great. Uh, I, I'll be sharing something in a minute. Yeah, I just wanted to revisit the um, this from a recreational aspect uh, and remind uh, uh, viewers that the South Gateway project that was um, brought to our attention by the town planner and the town administrator uh, acknowledged the benefits of community recreational access and economic impact. So recreation is a uh, important uh, driver in our community, both economic and community development. Uh, and point out that Neil Mill Road and Old Lee Road uh, which intersects just inside the gate of this pro- uh, proposed project are an integral part of this recreational ecosystem. Um, that includes year-round walkers, runners, cyclists, uh, snowshoers, snowmobiles. It's a uh, important snowmobile access both from uh, the Old Lee Paved Trailhead and uh, Neil Mill Road on the Newfield side. So there are plenty of snowmobiles zipping through there in the winter. And such active enough that the town saw fit to put some additional parking uh, just outside the gate uh, for people that wanted to use um, this, this uh, access into um, Neil Mill Road and, and Old Lee Road. And coincidentally, it's a gateway to the Selt Piscassic Greenway. And I'll get to the importance of that in just a minute. But all of these link to the Rockingham Recreational Trail, which has become a very popular uh, recreational lane as well. Um, I came by through the Rockingham Planning Commission, a use study uh, that was conducted uh, last summer on the Rockingham Rail Trail for a three-week period. And the takeaway from that was uh, and it was a non-holiday three-week period. The takeaway from that was there's an average of two hundred and forty users a year. Um, uh, I mean, a, a day uh, during that period. And I can tell you, you know, from anecdotally, if you go to Rockingham Junction at any given point, you're gonna find a lot of cars down there, people accessing. And why that's important is um, if you uh, take a look at where's uh, that, okay. This is a, what's known as a heat map. This shows uh, usage of a particular area. Uh, and this data was captured through Strava, which is a uh, outdoor recreation enthusiast's um, social media platform. But all these scratchy lines down at the bottom along the rail trail are kind of off, you know, they, it didn't pick up accurately, but that actually is rail trail usage. So you can imagine that the thicker and the brighter that line gets, that indicates uh, usage. For example, if you look below uh, you know, the Shanda Park area to the left of it, it's kind of a muted, I'm colorblind, but I'm gonna call it a light pink. But you look at the rail trail and it's a very broad purple. And my point here is this, if you take a look at the uh, intensity and uh, brightness of the rail trail, it's not much of a stretch. There's not much diminution from that to Old Lee Road out to the gate at Neil Mill Road and into um, uh, Selt Piscassic Greenway by the burnt extension. The point is, is this is a very important, highly-used recreational gateway. And um, I would see any developed class six road uh, that's incorporated in that uh, would be, you know, would cause a adverse impact on, on usage and desirability. Um, and not for nothing, but the Old Lee Road on the Newfield side, Newfield saw a fit to reclassify that as a class A trail. Um, so that's something that might be considered down the road. But those are my points, very important recreational gateway. We have very few uh, two class six roads in town and one of them has already gone under the knife. Uh, so my view is that this ought to be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffee. Um, could you undo your sh- screen sharing, please?
Ten bucks.
Done. Excellent. Um, so again, uh, please share, uh, um, have some patience here because I'm, a lot of people are on the, this call, but I can't see a lot of people. Um, who, anybody else, if you want to speak, would you please hit the raise your hand button or whatever, so I can see, anybody wants to speak?
Eric?
Yes.
This is Patrick Reynolds from the New Market Conserv.
Great.
I, I just wanted to provide the planning board with an update on where we are. Um, I, as Mr. Albert pointed out, he came to our last meeting and gave us an overview and was available to us for some questions. But um, our plan is to go, have as many people go as possible on the site walk. And then we would provide our recommendations at that point, after that site walk. Um, probably to both the planning board and the town council, since ultimately this will be before the town council. Um, so I just wanted to sort of put that out there procedurally. That's how we were seeing this. Um, the other, the other question I had, and really it's a question for Diane, was the issue that was brought up um, about um, the class six road and whether the ownership by a butters goes to the center line of the road? Ha- has that been addressed by anyone legally uh, on staff at the town?
I just, um, I'm putting together my list and on the list is to review a few legal items with our town attorney, John Ratigan. And I'm not an expert in road law and it's a very specific area of law, as Mr. Scully can attest to. Um, it's my understanding that if we have a deed to a property, i.e. in the newer subdivisions, we actually have a deed to meets and bounds description of the right of way. Many of these old um, class six roads are merely cattle paths and they've evolved over time. And in the principle of uh, road law, um, they're prescriptive rights to the folks who use it. In this case, it's a, it is considered a public road. And it's not clear to me, um, you know, the, the, the details, but that's my understanding that um, ownership on either side is to the center line and that the town has a right of way over it. You're asking me a very specific legal question, and again, I would have to have feedback from John Ratigan, our legal counsel. And that's part of the TRC process, is to sort through these issues and resolve them. So we can come back with a, you know, concise recommendation going forward. And it is a good, very good question that you raised, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Thank you, Patrick. Okay, now I see the screen. I see people with their hands raised. So first, uh, Duane Hyde from S, SELT, please?
Sure, thank you. Uh, I'll try to unraise my hand. There we go. Uh, my name is Duane Hyde. I'm the Land Conservation Director for the Southeast Land Trust and thank you for the opportunity to comment on the uh, proposed improvement six road. Uh, the board is in receipt of my March tenth letter. Uh, which I'm just gonna highlight a few of the items uh, in my public comment here, but I think the letter does a, a good job uh, addressing uh, uh, with the Southeast Land Trust's comments. I'm happy to answer any questions folks may have on them. Uh, and I also want to thank the applicant, uh, they're, they're, and Chris Albert was, they were kind enough to uh, go on a site walk uh, with us early on in this application, which obviously they didn't have to do and we really appreciated their time and opportunity. And most of our comments, we talked about in the field that day. Uh, folks probably know the Southeast Land Trust, we're a nonprofit conservation organization. We own eight thousand seven hundred acres all over Rockingham and Stratford Counties, but right here, uh, abutting this uh, Neil Mill Road, we own about four hundred and forty acres known as Piscass. right here, uh, abutting this uh, Neil Mill Road, we own about four hundred and forty acres known as Piscassic Greenway. So our, our comments, uh, focus, I think the engineering, uh, requests that Bill brought up will address the first item that was in my letter, uh, just to really better understand the potential impacts to our property, uh, both direct and indirect. The current plan, although Chris was very good at, and assured us that all the work would be in the right-of-way, uh, we still would like to be able to understand the improvements and the impacts. I seeing engineered plans, so that we can understand that is in fact the case, of what Chris was telling us. Um, the uh, the other question we had was with respect to the gate. Currently, there is a, a gate at the end of Neil Mill Road, where the Class VI, Five Road ends and the Class VI road starts, and the applicant, uh, on their plan notes that they're proposing a new electronic gate. Uh, and I just, our, our questions were with regard to the, our ability to access the Piscassic Greenway for management purposes. Right now, we can open that gate, uh, freely, uh, to get into the Piscassic Greenway for management purposes. And we would wanna make sure that any new gate, we would also have ready access to, and wouldn't need a key or any, any type of special transponder. Uh, the, the issue with the, with the gate there and a, and a driveway that is of some concern, that need, that needs further discussion, we believe, is that once a improved driveway is over the road, it may be more inviting for people to go down that road, uh, and drive down that road, and start parking along the road, and creating parking issues both for the applicant and for the town. And also potentially third-party motor vehicle trespass onto this land, which we currently don't allow motorized vehicles of the, than snowmobiles on. So, that is of, of concern, and hopefully will be part of the discussion of the commission. And uh, I mean, excuse me, the, the board and the town council. Uh, then, uh, as Arlen had pointed out, the public use, the level of use of that road is very high. Uh, and we do have some concerns about future, uh, we understand the applicant is very welcoming of public use, uh, from our site walk, and uh, but we do have to think about the future, and that we all, none of us are gonna be here forever, and there will be future owners out there, and we do have concerns about uh, calls to the Southeast Land Trust, calls to the town with concerns about the level of use of that road and impacts on the uh, the property owner. And then, uh, another comment and concern about our, our liability, Southeast Land Trust's liability of using that road. Right now, when we do land management, uh, on a property, uh, we often use heavy equipment, we were just out on the Piscassic Greenway doing some bird habitat restoration work this summer. Uh, that involved a big piece of machinery called a brontosaurus, uh, requires heavy equipment to get it out there. And uh, when we, uh, we didn't need, need road in this instance, but in other areas of the, of the county, we have used Class VI roads, and we work with the road agent for the town. And uh, make sure we uh, we reckon, we repair any parts of the road that, that are damaged by the equipment, and working with the town. And that's usually a pretty light lift on a fixed road, they're not really ma- they're not maintained, so the, the the fixing of the road is a pretty easy thing to do, but with a driveway, we're very concerned that this could increase the cost to the Southeast Land Trust to such a degree that our management becomes impractical, because we are now having to repair a, a driveway. Uh, and we're concerned about our liability there. Uh, and the, right when I raised this to the applicant during our site walk, they were, they were kind enough to offer to limit our liability in that area, and take on the liability, which was very generous of them. Um, and we would just, if that were the case, uh, we would wanna make sure that this is very clear for all future owners, we have lots of properties where we have rights-of-way over other people's property that are clear and legal, and we get into disagreements about those rights-of-way, so we're concerned about future disagreements on these, these types of matters. And then, uh, Diane hit on it early, uh, with her comment about the ownership to the centerline. There's some question about whether the uh, utilities that are gonna be underground are going to be public, or whether there'll be private lines, and if they're private, whether that is a um, uh, a right the town has to allow a private utility in the, in the right-of-way. So it's more of a legal question that, uh, would be worth investigating. So that's a very quick, uh, tried to be quick, because I know you have a lot of people, summary of our, our comments, which were provided in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Um, I see, next, I see Sheila, Sheila, could you um, just identify yourself, I see Sheila, Sheila Slane on the board, please?
Sorry, I just moved on the screen, oh, there I am, excuse me. My name is Sheila Lane, and I'm a resident on eighty Halls Mill Road. And um, I feel I'm very privileged to have both the rail trail and the greenway at both ends, whichever way I walk out of my driveway. I have walked, skied, snowshoed, um, been out there with my grandchildren, my children, um, in that area, and I just wanna wholeheartedly agree that that area is a huge recreation area, and I really appreciate uh, graphic that Mr. Chaffey put up, I appreciate that. I, I'm sorry, I'm a little remiss on a couple of pieces of information, how large tract of land is that? And is it possible to divide that, even if it's just a family compound in the future?
Can I answer that?
Go ahead Diane.
Yeah, um, you know, on the tax maps, it says it's forty-eight acres, and uh, Mr. Albert has referred in his materials thirty-three acres. And I don't believe there's a complete boundary survey, and our, our very friendly Mr. Doucette, who actually did some survey out in that area, can probably attest to this. But um, so, in response to your first question, in order to get a firm handle on that, I think a survey, boundary survey would be in order. Um, as far as subdivision, in Newmarket- Okay, I'm not finished.
Meetings, eh, like, cut off in a, in forty-five minutes?
I want a town meeting.
Excuse me, somebody's on the, could you please move it?
Thank you. Um, in Newmarket, we have subdivision regulations, and to cr- in order to uh, subdivide land, a p- a parcel of land has to meet frontage requ- In this particular zone, this is an R-one zone, and the frontage requirement is two hundred feet. In the town's regulations, in order to create a new lot, you have to have two hundred feet of frontage on an approved town road, which is a Class VI or, or lower. And in this particular place, case, is a Class VI road, so technically, the only way that this land could be further subdivided is if the road were upgraded to a much higher standard, a Class V standard, which is a full fifty-foot right-of-way with utilities, with um, drainage, um, you know, uh, paving and the whole course that we recommend and have in our subdivision regulations. So as far as future development, um, you know, I think it's, it's critical that we look at this in a long-range um, situation, because sometime in the future, there may be pressure put on the town to upgrade it to a Class V uh, roadway, which in effect would uh, stimulate uh, development in that area, which, you know, as we've all recognized, is a very uh, pristine and valued and significant uh, natural and cultural resource for both the town of Newmarket and Newfields. So hopefully, I've answered that question, we do not have a Class A recreation trail system, as you fields, and I assume you're, you live in Newfield, Sheila.
Yes, I'm on Halls Mill Road, I'm at the other end.
Yeah, so, I, you know, there is some long-range concerns about what this could lead to in the future, if it's uncontrolled, if you will. So, anyway, those are my, hopefully I've answered the question correctly.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that, um, Halls Mill Road is a really good, good example of moving the gate. And it was paved and, and subsequently houses have been put in. So that's one point, but I'm vehemently against this, because I, 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 I'm I don't wanna be an unwelcoming neighbor, because it's a possibility it could go through. But on the other hand, I just see too much going on out there with the greenway, and, and those fields are absolutely the most beautiful fields, hands down, so, um, I just wanna make my comment public, thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, Sheila. Next up, I see Joff. Hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Yes, good evening, my name's Joff Barnett. Um, I am, I uh, live at the end of Neil Mill Road, and own the uh, land on both sides of the end of Neil Mill Road, uh, in the Class V section of the road, and the beginning of the Class VI section of the road. And uh, have not been part of this process at all, until very recently. So I was not part of the uh, site review that um, Mr. Hyde, uh, from Selt had the opportunity to do with the, with the Tysons. Uh, so I'm, I'm sort of new to the, to the issues here. Um, and I share many of the concerns, I have reviewed the um, letter that Mr. Hyde wrote, um, to the board. Also reviewed the memo, uh, from Ellen Snyder of the Conservation Commission, uh, to the Conservation Commission. And I share many of their concerns regarding um, the engineering, um, the uh, you know, how that's gonna impact the environment. Uh, I have a real concern about the gate, uh, preventing me to have access to my land on both sides, uh, on the, on the Class um, VI side of the uh, road. I take my tractor down the uh, Class VI road to, I participated in trying to help, uh, in a very minimal way, um, the, rebuild the bridge on Old Lee Road, but drove some uh, heavy equipment down there. It's a, um, essentially a uh, uh, bank run and crushed gravel driveway that was raised up on the road, and I drove my equipment over that. Um, there would, there would certainly be some changes to the driveway. So, as I understand, um, the uh, Tysons had the opportunity to indicate to Selt that they were not gonna hold them harmless in terms of their uh, activity of uh, uh, land management, and I would hope uh, they would extend the same uh, opportunity to me. Um, I don't have any plans of engaging in any kind of major uh, logging or uh, land management uh, activity at all, but uh, you know, I do plan to harvest some trees and use that for firewood and that sort of thing. Um, and uh, using the Class VI road is the easiest way to get around. Um, there are two issues, so in, I'm in broad support of the questions that are being raised by uh, uh, Mr. Hyde and Ms. Snyder. Uh, there are two issues that they did not bring up, which I wanna raise. I've sent a uh, email note to uh, Diane uh, earlier this evening, and I apologize about it not being available in writing for the, the Tysons and their attorney and agent to look at. Um, but you should be able to, to get a copy of that, uh, through Diane. Um, and those issues have to do with the increased use, I've noticed, um, a large number of increased uh, numbers of people going by. Uh, many of them are elderly, uh, and some of them are handicapped, including a gentleman that uses a motorized wheelchair. Um, and who comes from the Old Lee Mill Road side. Um, how he is going to, or rather, his wheelchair is going to negotiate a two-foot-high ri- rise in the road makes some concern for me, and I don't think we should limit the access of the road to the handicapped. In my uh, professional work, we deal with the access of uh, you know, equal access for the handicapped individuals to uh, uh, public facilities and that sort of thing all the time, and that really needs to be taken into consideration, so that uh, uh, one of the concerns that I wanna express is that the engineer, who is gonna be the design of the driveway, make sure that it doesn't create some hazards for the elderly that are using the road, uh, or the handicapped that are using the road, that's the only significant new issue that I would add to those of uh, that, those brought up by uh, Selt and the Conservation Commission, I'll, I'll close there.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Um, next on the board, I see Elizabeth France? Li- oh, okay.
Hi, Frances Skinny, but France could be a lot easier, so I appreciate that. Um, um, yeah, hi, I'm Lizzy, and, and I live in Newmarket, um, on uh, fourteen Riverbend Road, and I just wanted to stop in today and kind of echo what a lot of the others are saying, as far as the importance of this recreational area, and this environmental area, um. If anyone in this meeting hasn't had the chance to be out there, you must go, because it is so stunningly beautiful, the open fields that are there currently are just breathtaking. Um, and um, it's such a popular area. Running and hiking out there for over a decade, I'm sure other people have been doing that much longer than me, but um, I used to not see anybody out there at all, ever, and then, um, in the past, you know, five and less years, more and more and more people have been going out, and it's such a, a popular recreation spot, especially since Selt built the bridge over the Beaver Pond to um, complete the loop over on the uh, Burn Extension, so it's so, um, such a, a gem for the community to have that right here in Newmarket, um, and it's used all the time. Um, and I, so I have concerns for recreation, and I have concerns for the environment. Um, you know, Selt was really trying to make um, a pathway for wildlife, um, all the way down to the Great Bay, and just adding more houses is not um, helpful for that. Um, and I just, one, in case anyone hasn't been out there, I just wanted to share my screen real quick. Um, so, here is a picture of my, one of my twins, my two-year-old twins out there, um, on this stretch of land. Um, this tree here is one, probably the most beautiful tree I've ever seen in my life, the first time I rode my bike by it, I just had to stop and take a picture. And now that I have three little ones of my own to go out always stop and uh, examine the tree and see if anything's living inside of it, and it's just so, so peaceful out there, to be out there with my family, and um, adding a, a house right over here in this field, um, would definitely change that, so, just something to consider, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear that, and thinking about um, not just us, but what our future generation with this little lady will grow up to have, um, in her life as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Alright, um, is there anybody else who would like to comment? I don't see any hands raised at this point.
Mr. Chairman, this is Attorney Scully, are we, are we gonna be provided the opportunity to respond?
Sure, sure, but um-
As soon as public comment's over, I don't wanna interrupt anybody.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yes, um. So I just scrolled through my screen a couple times, I don't see any hands up. So, with that, I'm gonna- Yes, Val?
Is there anyone at town hall that, to comment?
Good question. Is there anybody at town hall that would like to comment on this topic? Let's see, Tim in the background.
Hello?
Hello?
It's Glenn Dodds, uh, like to comment on the, uh, addition of a house, I don't think anybody wants to see a house where there wasn't one, but I'm pretty sure everybody that's dialed in is living in a house where there my whole life, I've worked in that field, for a couple of the farmers that have owned it. Uh, I'm a little upset that the number of hurdles that have been placed in front of these people- to build a home. Say, not that I want to see an extra house, but that's private property and you have a landowner trying to sell it and you have a person that wants to buy it and build a home for their family. And I don't think there should be quite so many obstacles in the way. There's many more comments about the land trust stuff. And I mean, the simple fact is they have town right-of-way through there, town road, Class 6, so it, and they should not be impeded in putting in a house. And I'm saying my whole life, that's been my background, my backyard. So town should support and allow them to move forward with obvious guidelines. But the amount of engineering and hoops is, that's a lot of money for these people to lay out. Just, and they haven't even started building, they're just trying to get it permitted. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dodds. Is there anybody else at Town Hall that would? All right, at this point, I would say there is nobody else here that would like to speak to that. So Mr. Scully, before we wrap this up, I'll turn it back to you. If, if you or your clients would like to comment on anything they heard, feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll, I'll also, you know, if Chris Albert wants to make any comments afterwards, I just wanted to make a few comments in response to what was stated this evening. And I think it's important for, for many reasons. And I think, you know, as the board may understand, when, when I as a land use attorney, you know, review projects, I often challenge my clients and, and attempt to have them understand the issues that, that have come with the land. And, and you know, by trade, prior to going to law school, I was an engineer and worked a lot with coastal engineering and coastal developments on the seacoast. And, you know, I'm cognizant of what Mr. Dodds was saying as far as we had a previous, you know, no one wants to see a new home built on what was once a grass field. But often in, in, you know, in the seacoast area, we hear if you want ocean view, you should buy ocean view. And so it's, it's somewhat analogous to this situation. And again, where the applicant is very cognizant of what's going on here. And I think they're very well aware of the obstructions that have been put forward, or at least the concerns. And I think it's been clear based upon the comments this evening from Selt and others that they've been willing to work with everyone, including the town, to try and make this as accessible and as meaningful as possible for everyone. But I do think as a, as an advocate for my clients, I think that there are certain things that I would like to address with the board this evening. One of which is that this is private property. And this property has been for sale for quite some time. And if, you know, a conservation group or, or others wanted to purchase this property, it was for sale and it was, it was up for purchase. And that didn't happen. And so my clients did come in and purchased this, or at least have a purchase and sale agreement in place for this property. And, and we're not here for a variance and we, we're not going before the zoning board of adjustment for a variance at this time because this is private property and this is a buildable lot. Secondly, I think that. Where that myself, my clients, Mr. Albert, everybody's very cognizant of the fact that this road is very much used for recreational purposes. And there's no intent whatsoever here to obstruct that. I think that the applicants and my clients are, are, want this to be continued to use for recreation. And it makes a tremendous amount of sense. In fact, Julie, who will, will be the steward of the land, should this all go through, is, is, you know, well vested into the environment up in Vermont. And I think with regard to the concerns that were addressed with the gate, if you were to refer to RSA 231:21-AI, that would require gates or anything on a Class 6 road to be maintained by private landowners, but so much so that they can't interfere the public access of the road. So that gate must be able to be opened and closed by any member of the public wishes to get back and forth. That's mandated by New Hampshire law. So there's, there shouldn't be really a concern with the gate because there is law in New Hampshire that states that on a Class 6 road, although a private landowner can put up a gate, that gate needs to be opened and closed or needs to be accessible by the public. So I think that that's one of the concerns is that we're very cognizant of what's going on here. And we, and we want this to be continued to use for recreation. And I think a good question was asked about subdivisions and, and that this property likely can't be subdivided unless this road is upgraded. And that is true. But the benefit here is you have someone who's going to be a wonderful steward of the land and someone who wants this to be used for recreation and someone who only wants to put up a single-family home. There's nothing more here. This is a single-family home. And so to suggest that this is going to be somehow become a highway because it's now has a driveway off of this Class 6 road is simply improper and unjust. It's not true. It's just going to be a single-family home. And also, you know, a, a comment was made about improving this and, and how it can be, it can maybe lead to more cars coming down this road. I, I don't think an applicant can be demonized for attempting to improve a Class 6 road. I, I simply don't think that that's fair. And also in terms of Selt liability, we, we have discussed that and I know that my clients are, are well aware of the liability. And I think it's also of, of, you know, addressing with the board. For those of you that are unaware, and, and I don't want to insult anybody's intelligence because I'm sure everybody's dealt with this before. But in terms of a Class 6 road and a private driveway being put off of that, part of the statute requires the applicant to put forth a waiver that basically states that the applicant will be liable for, for the roadway. So the town will not be, and that must be recorded prior to this being approved. Let me see here. So I, I think that's generally it. I think most of the abutters that spoke this evening, we're already cognizant of their concerns and we want to work with them. And we want to work with everybody to make this a viable project for everyone. But I do think that, you know, people that spoke this evening have benefited off of this road. And, and I, and I think it's somewhat unjust to say that this now person or people who are attempting to buy a private piece of property should be somehow burdened by the fact that they're off this Class 6 road. I think everybody can benefit off this road equally. And I think that we do have a wonderful steward of the land. And I'm happy to supply Julie's resume to, to anybody that needs to see it. I, I, I mean, she, she has the intent to use this land in a wonderful way and make this, I think, what would be a wonderful addition to the town. And so I just wanted to make that clear for the board this evening. I know that this isn't the last time we'll be before you, but I think that some of these points are important on behalf of the applicant. So I thank you all very much. I know it's been a long evening.
Thank you, Mr. Scully. All right, so Diane, at this point, we need to second the procedures in place here. First, we need to set up a TRC, correct?
She's muted.
Diane, you need to unmute yourself.
Oh, I know, I know.
Okay.
It's not something I can easily do sometime.
Okay, that's fine. No, that's fine.
Yes, absolutely. The first thing I think is we need to set up a TRC. And one of the residents. And it is a process by which all the town departments who have an interest in this project have an opportunity to review and comment on the plans, including water, wastewater. In this case, it's not, that's not going to be a major issue. But the fire chief, the public works director, our review engineer, and it's an opportunity for us to work through the issues that have been identified this evening and have been in the weeks ahead of this meeting. So these are meetings that are, where of course they're open to the public. We're happy to include any member of the public who's here tonight to, to join us for those meetings. They are not public hearings per se. And it's up to the chairman whether he wants to have public comment. We try to be as very open and transparent as possible because we value everyone's opinion. So the, this committee is, also includes representation from the planning board. We have usually two or three planning board members who can help then act as a liaison when it comes back to the planning board. So what I would recommend to the board this evening is that we do set up a TRC so we can have, also have a site walk of the property so that we can move forward in our process. And I, I have a proposal from our review engineer who is ready to assist us with this. And I will be getting a list of items to Mr. Albert in terms of additional information that we'll need and going forward. So we're not wasting everyone's time reviewing half-complete plans. So we have a very detailed engineering plan set to work from because you really need to have that level of detail to do justice to the project. And I guess with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, to solicit some interest from planning board members to sit on the TRC for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Are there any members who would like to volunteer for this TRC? I see Bill Doucette raises his hand, Val Shelton. If nobody else wants to volunteer, I'll volunteer.
Erica, this is Jane. I, I can fulfill a slot if you will, if you'd like.
I'm saying, you, you said you would do it, you would be willing to join?
Yes, yes.
Okay, what, okay, you can do it. That's fine. That's fine.
Can you during the day, Jane? Because these are daytime meetings.
Yes, I can. The day I can't do it is next week, but I'll be around. Yeah.
Okay. Diane, we have Bill Doucette, Val Shelton, and Jane Ford as a TRC. We, I suppose we should, well, I guess it's up to the, the board. Diane, what's your thoughts on setting up a site walk?
I think it's helpful to have a site walk as early in the process as possible. And I think Mr. Albert hit the nail on the head at the Conservation Commission meeting saying, the site walk is really the proof in the pudding, you know? You need to get out there in the field and I think Sheila Lane mentioned it as well. So that you can really get a sense of the, the context. So yes, I would say maybe within the next couple of weeks, if we could schedule that, that would be helpful. And Mr. Doucette, I think.
Bill?
I think a site walk is premature until we know what the design is.
Yeah, I actually, I actually. I, I think Bill's right with that. Let's see what the design is. Then we could ask questions about the design in the field if we need to, having seen it. I mean, it shouldn't be that far off. We should be, we should be getting it. So.
I think, I think that Mr. Albert was looking for some direction from the planning board as to what we are looking to see.
That's what Diane would come back to me again. This is a, you know, again, this is a, you know, time and material scope project. So again, if this requested additional information, if, if there's a, a, a quick synopsis from Diane, you know, from the planning board, then, then we've got to sit down with Mr. Tyson and look at those costs. We just got the cost from your peer review from your engineer, which is another additional cost that we've got to look at. I know she's talked about working with Mark West on what he wants. So again, there's, there's a lot of circling the wagons and putting this package back together again. I mean, as far as the design, I mean, it's a matter of cutting profiles and, and across sections. I mean, I, I stated on the plans, you know, what the fill sections would be for the, the two-foot and one-foot fill sections. I showed the trees to be removed. It's really a matter of working with engineers on my staff and a land surveyor from, from Josh Manning's team that stamped that. So again, it's, it's more time and money, but again, it's something we're going to fulfill as part of the, the planning board's requirements.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, Mr. Albert. I think it's incumbent on us to tell you what we're looking to receive. So you can, and your clients can, can determine what the best avenue is to move forward. So, I mean, I, I, I agree, Bill Doucette brought it up earlier, that other plans are submitted, need to be stamped by a surveyor and an engineer, a professional engineer. Diane, do we have a, do you have a list or have you thought about a list of?
I have been compiling a list and I was also waiting for tonight's hearing because, you know, the, the, the abutters and the citizens do bring a lot of value added to the process and can help to define what the issues are that we need to be focusing on. So that's part of my reason for not having something for you this evening because I think that was, would have been premature. I am planning on putting a list together for Chris over the next couple of days. If you'd like me to send that out to the TRC members for commentary prior to giving it to the applicant, I'm happy to do that if you think that might be a reasonable approach.
I, I think that would be wise. I mean, I think we need to, you know, my opinion is we need to, and I know Mr. Albert brought it up earlier, is look at things like, you know, trees. How many trees are going to get cut down if any within the right-of-way? How many are going to be impacted with fill around them if there are any, you know, that type of stuff? I don't think it's very hard, but it's just information that we need to get.
Absolutely, and I agree.
Val, go ahead.
I believe Diane, that your planner's comments should go to the whole board and then each board member should respond to you so that then the applicant knows where the board, what the actual board is looking for and not any individual or you as the planner, please.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. And there's some things that have been requested of us that I think are a little bit beyond the scope of the project, such as doing, with all due respect to our environmental wildlife folks, doing a, a natural resource inventory and wildlife assessment within a one-mile radius of a site. I think that's a little excessive. So I, I guess I'd like to hear some comments back from the board on that to make sure that we are all in agreement with what we're requesting and that it is reasonable. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I mean, Diane, I, I would think that, yeah, when you have your list ready, you know, send it out and we can, if there's obviously anybody wants to add anything, then we can add it to and talk about it, whether that's something that we want to add, you know? I, I know, so let's, the other thing that's always an issue, and I know, Mr. Albert, I know you had talked about this and I know you talked about this at our last meeting. Wetlands, from what I remember, there were no impacts to wetlands.
No, there's no, there's no wetland impacts. I did delineate a small wetland finger near the edge of the tree line by the cemetery, which is on the plans.
Yep. Yeah, and there was, and you said there was a, was there a little culvert that's somewhere there?
Just a flow equalization culvert at the low spot in the roadway.
Okay, okay. So Diane, that's one of the things that I think, you know, Mark West, we should just have him go out and look at the, the wetland flag and make sure he agrees.
I have talked. You're muted. To us, I know.
Okay, there you go.
Computer, it's not me. Okay. Mark West has, is holding off on providing his proposal because he wants to see more detail on the wetlands assessment and the information that is on the plan. And I have given to Mr. Albert a very detailed build-out analysis that was done by Mr. West with the, I think it was either the Nature Conservancy or the Selt back when we were looking into well exploration. So the information is there. We just need to make sure that it's clear and it's concise and it's on the plan. And we want to look at, you know, at 250-foot area around the, the site itself to include not only the footprint of the house, but to include the septic system, the well, the churning area for fire engines, et cetera, and also on either side of the roadways. And I was out there on Friday and the first 400 feet of the roadway was, had drainings that were filled with water. So definitely wetland impacts is something that needs to be looked at. And it's not just the wetland impacts, it is the buffer requirements that the town has. And Mr. Albert is aware of those. We have 25-foot and 50-foot buffer requirements around poorly drained and very poorly drained soils. So that needs to be added to the plan. And, you know, once we get that plan, we'll send it over to Mr. West and have his evaluation. And hopefully, I mean, with Mr. Albert's expertise in wetland science, it should be a very easy process, I would think.
Mr. Doucette, I saw you raised your hand. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just to be clear, I, I think our scope is limited to the Class 6 road. I don't know why we're looking at the subject parcel. Earlier was talked about, you know, maybe we should do a boundary search. I, I, I don't understand that. I don't care whether it's 30, 40, or five acres. I don't care where they're putting their septic system. I don't care what the house looks like. We're looking at a Class 6 road and putting a driveway on it.
Yeah, that's a good point, Bill. You're right. You are 100% right. That is our, our sole focus is the Class 6 road. If, if, if they have issues on the lot themselves, I'm calm or whoever they need to deal with for those.
The, the, you know, the building department might have a say in that when they go, when comes time to build the actual construction of the house after it's been approved by the council.
Yep, they may. You're right, they may, but that's really, I guess that's, my, Bill's good point is not our point. Val, I saw you raised your hand.
No, I just, I wanted to concur with what, you know, Bill has just said. I said it earlier, our role is to provide comments to the town council. And we're dealing with, you know, use of this Class 6 road and the upgrade of it. Additionally, I just wanted to make a comment that. Uh, additionally, I just wanted to make a comment that when Diane does send out the, her list of questions to the board, we really need to be cognizant that we do not re- reply all. That's right. It needs to be singular reply back to Diane so that we're not, um, having quote unquote, a public meeting.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, do any other board members have any questions or comments? I think we have a direction to go. So, like Diane, the plan is in the next few days to get, um, some information to Mr. Albert so he can sit with his clients and, um, go through what direction we're proposing.
Right, but beforehand, I will send it out to the planning board.
Absolutely, that sounds good.
That's something I can do tomorrow morning in a half an hour. It's going to take probably.
Sure, understood. And we're going to focus on the class six road. That's a good point, Bill. We were kind of.
Well, but, but part of the use of the class six road includes having an emergency turnaround for fire engines. So that has to be part of the process too. Okay, it, you.
Yeah.
Okay, so. And they're really, it's not, if, I've been told that it's really not going to be an issue. And it's going to be a minor review. It's not something that's going to be belabored for, um, six months like our, the last application we had.
Sounds good. Anybody else have anything to add on this application? Or this, this discussion?
No, I just wanted to thank the, uh, chairman and the members of the board and Diane for your time and, and the abutter input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, with that, we will, uh, we need to continue this, Diane, right? To, our next meeting is April.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
All right, let's scroll on calendar.
I'll entertain a motion to continue.
April, yes, thirteenth.
Continue to April thirteenth?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Doucette. Is our second?
Second. Oh, Jamie second.
Jamie second, great. Any discussion? All right, we've got to go through the list. All those in favor of continuing. Jamie Bruton.
Aye.
Scott Blackstone.
Aye.
Bill Doucette.
Aye.
Mikael Zahorek.
Aye.
Jane Ford. Jane Ford.
Aye.
Um, Val Shelton.
Aye.
And I, Eric Bodeman vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Great. We will see everybody back on that one next month. Next on the agenda is there will be a public hearing for an application for design review requested by CRC Future Corp for revision to the Phase Two Site Plan for Hershey Green Condominium that approved, that approved by the planning board on eleven, twelve, nineteen. The applicant proposes to increase the number of units in Phase Two from twenty-eight to thirty-eight units. In the revised plan, there will be six single family homes in the cul-de-sac where seven were previously approved. The remaining previously approved single family home lots along the proposed through road duplexes, parentheses, thirty-two units. Total number of units in Phase One and Two of the Hershey Green condominium development will be forty-eight units if the proposed revision is approved upon completion. The lot is located Hershey Lane text map R five lot one thirty-two, R two, in the R two zone. So, as I'd said earlier, this meeting was not posted properly. Um, this is a, this is an official public hearing, so, uh, my first reaction is I have concerns about moving forward with this. But I would like to get, uh, input from the rest of the board.
Does, does the applicant have a concern? Is the applicant here?
Yeah, I, I see.
Yeah, hi, Paul Carrigan. Paul Carrigan from Chinburg Development. Um, well, I have, I have mixed feelings about this and I, I say that because I think there are quite a few people here and, uh, you know, if, if I'm looking at that notice, even though it said twenty twenty on it, I would think it would be tonight, but, uh, in, in my summary that I was going to read to you, there were a butter notification error to begin with, a year, a little over a year ago. So, uh, I, I don't want to duplicate that again, although I think this is for public comment, but I don't think we're, we're not looking for an approval tonight, other than just an acceptance of this plan. So it's, it's not an official approval. So I then asked the question of you folks, the, the planning board. Um, I don't mind presenting.
Okay. Val?
Yeah, just said, and I.
Val, you're muted.
Muted, Val. Sorry, went the other way. I, I, just another question. From the way this was noticed, um, it's an application for design review. Are, was this actually supposed to be an application for a modification to the site plan approval?
No, let, I suggested to Mr. Carrigan that we follow the same process that we followed last year, um, November two thousand nineteen, when this was before the board before. In which case we had a design review first where Walt Chuni Jr. came in and did a presentation. Um, got some feedback from the planning board and then at the next meeting, we actually had it scheduled for a formal, um, review by the board. Um, so I think, you know, it's, I think we're covered, but I don't want to speak on behalf of, you know, if, if the applicant feels uncomfortable because of the history on this, then, um, you know, I think it's up to the board. And I don't see why there's an issue for us to at least hear some public comment or presentation.
Um, let me ask.
Finish up there. So, in reality, under design review, we're really not looking at an actual application to act on.
No, not this evening, which is.
Just looking, the, the applicant is just looking for feedback, for specifics, as opposed to a conceptual review that's non-binding.
That is correct.
Okay, um, Bill Doucette, what do you think?
I would, uh, follow our attorney's recommendation.
Okay. And Diane, what was our attorney's recommendation?
I did review it with John Ratigan and he, he also was familiar with the history on this because we talked about it last summer when the issue came up about notification last time. And, um, he, he said to me that, and we looked at the notice and he saw that the heading was, you know, two thousand and, and the text of it, that it was two thousand twenty-one and it, it could be contributed to what's called a scribe's era. And it's a, it's a typo. It's something that is very obvious if you look at it. Anyone looking at that notice, um, you know, would see that, um, it, it's not logical that it's, it was scheduled for last year. So, and that, you know, hi- his thought was if you go ahead and have a public hearing at the next meeting and you correct that era, um, and it's accepted for review at the next meeting and acted upon, that, that should make the problem go away. And that way there would be the full legal notice, correct legal notice, you know, ten days in advance. And we would, you know, again, put it in the newspaper, but it really is an opportunity for us to correct the deficiency. And typically a public hearing is not a requirement, again, of the design review process, just that we notify the abutters. And I think we have representation from the abutters this evening.
Okay, and, okay, um, uh, Mr. Grilly, no, not, not yet, Mr. Grilly. I want to talk with the board members first, please. Um, Diane, I, I guess I, so basically, Mr. Ratigan is saying that as long as we notice the next meeting properly and notify abutters properly, that we'll go forward.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I'm fine with that then. I, I, and what are the other board members? Any other board members have any objections to moving forward? I'll make it. Okay, I hear none, then I, we will move forward. Um, so I'll put it back to Mr. Carrigan. Um, do you want to walk us through? Um, do you have plans you want to share with us and walk us through what the, um, revisions are here, the changes?
Uh, yeah, we, we have some plans, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, why don't I just do a, a brief summary? I sent along a letter to the planning board and I can kind of hit some of the highlights as to how we made our way here. And then Christian can take over with the plans and, and kind of an explanation, a little more technical explanation, uh, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
So, the subdivision, uh, at seventy Hershey Lane, now known as Stonehill Point, has seen several re- uh, revisions over the years. And we are once again here with, with another revised plan. Uh, in developing the plans, road profiles and, and construction details, we labored over what we think is the best, uh, use of the property. Um, we have determined that a combination of duplexes and single family units seem to make the most sense here. With, uh, Beals Associates Severino Construction and Doug Greiner, our landscape architect, uh, in working through this design concept. As we attempted to refine the single family concept, uh, we identified an error that had been made in a previous abutter notification process. The, uh, unit owners, the, uh, Hershey Green condo association that is directly behind us, that we will ultimately be a part of, uh, was improperly notified. So we grabbed the plans, uh, uh, notified them and, um, provided basically a site walk. We, we, um, had a conversation with them, shared our, our plans and what we were going to do. Uh, what, what our plans were at that point with the single, with the single units. We answered questions and, and sought input. And, you know, there, there were definitely some concerns at that point. So we went back, uh, took a look at some of the different design elements. We tweaked our plans. Um, and we actually were able to slide, um, what is one of the main detention pond elements a little bit away from, uh, the Hershey Green owners and at that point was able to, uh, uh, we increased buffer and the, the understory and, and the, um, we gave us ourselves a little space between the existing owners and what would be our units. We also, uh, li- after listening to some of their input, realized that we, on, on the lower road, we decided to go, uh, we went back to some duplex designs. And we actually selected one that made a lot of sense with the original singles that we had, uh, proposed up on the upper, upper, um, cul-de-sac. So, we just, we took a look at the duplexes. It made, made good sense. We, and, and we've redesigned the, uh, or, 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 or we looked at that as a, a better, better use of the area right behind the, the existing, um, duplexes, um, for, for the Hershey Green owners. And it, when we, when we took the singles and we, you know, pushed them together, it, it allowed for some better view corridors right behind them and it, it, it just gave them a little bit more space behind their units. So currently, we have sixteen duplexes proposed on that lower road. And we have, uh, so a total of thirty-two duplexes, or thirty-two units, excuse me, singles for a total of thirty-eight. And, uh, in that process also, I, I, I meant to say that we were able to eliminate one of the units up on the upper circle, which ac- actually gave ourselves a little bit more room up there. So, it's important to note that during these revisions, there, of the road profile, the drainage and the geometry of the road itself didn't change, with the exception of that one shift of that detention area. Uh, and our landscape architect worked with some of the individual unit owners. Um, we provided some screening details. And, uh, we were able to maintain some more understory and some buffered areas and some additional screening. Um, with some, with some individual meetings that we, we had with the, the, uh, Hershey Green owners. So we did revise that previous plan that was approved in the planning board in, back in November two thousand nineteen. Certainly was not our original intent to revise that. But in dealing, working with the association, we now have better, we have a better understanding of the challenges of the site and we believe the proposed mix of, of the units, uh, works best for everybody. So we're, we're here this evening to present the latest iteration of the plan. Uh, and I'll, from here, I'll let, uh, Christian take over. Certainly at the end, you can ask, ask a bunch of questions, but I'll hand off to Christian at this point.
Um, hey, Christian, before you start, I need to interject one thing here. Um, for the record, um, Paul, when you started talking, Bill Doucette, um, notified me he needs to recuse himself. So he has recused himself from, from this public hearing for the record. Um, sorry, Christian, please proceed.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. And again, for the record, my name is Christian Smith, engineer with Beals Associates, uh, representing Chinburg Properties on this project. And, uh, with that, I think the best way for me to go through this, Mr. Chairman, would be to, uh, share screen so I can show you the chronology of the plans that were submitted.
Absolutely.
Might take a second to come up. Are you seeing that yet?
Yes.
Okay, so this was the, the plan that we brought in, uh, and, and, uh, I believe Mr. Carrigan and Mr. Chaney went through with the board back in, uh, November of two thousand nineteen. Uh, and again, I think key here is pay attention to the geometry of the cul-de-sac and the lower through road. Um, from this particular plan, I will go to what was submitted initially to alteration of terrain back in July. I'm going to pan down here a little bit. See essentially the roads remain unaltered. And again, this looks very similar, uh, to what was presented in, in, um, now this was July of two thousand twenty, I should be clear on that. Uh, and this is what was presented to, um, or very similar to what was presented to the planning board in November of nineteen. Uh, we did receive in September, uh, request for information from alteration of terrain. And I think through that time, I was out of, uh, work for a bit with eye surgery and, uh, I know that, uh, both, um, Chinburg Properties and, and Mr. Chaney and as, uh, Paul mentioned before, the landscape architect were working with the abutters and trying to, uh, get things squared away and, and, you know, address their concerns that were, that were being raised. So what we returned to alteration of terrain with on December tenth was this plan. And again, the roads on this were absolutely unchanged. We reduced the number of units down around the cul-de-sac from seven to six. And as Paul mentioned, we have the sixteen, uh, duplexes now. One of the main features of this, uh, somebody have a question? I apologize, it must have been a blip on my computer. Um, one of the, one of the main things that came out of this was, uh, as Paul mentioned, you better separation between the individual buildings, uh, which improves the view shed for all of the folks up, uh, on the hill. And, uh, what we worked through as well was to take a detention area, you can see the easement for it right here, and actually push that to the south and provide a larger, uh, and by elimination of the one unit here, provide a larger natural vegetated buffer to the three existing duplexes, uh, that are along hillside lane. So that's, that's kind of the history of, uh, or, or the evolution of how the plan went together and, and how we ended up where we are. Um, and if, if you'd like to see some, some additional exhibits, um, I know Mr. Greiner, uh, the landscape architect is on with us tonight. And, uh, we can show you some of those, uh, if, if you have any interest.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, first of all, I'd like to open it up to the board. Does board, any board members have any questions at this point? I have one, Christian. Um, you mentioned AOT. Um, have you submitted a, a formal AOT at this point, or are you waiting to get feedback from us?
Uh, no, essentially alteration of terrain has approved the plan. Building pattern waiting for Nogentia Fishing Game, uh, to opine on Go Environmental's Wildlife Habitat Assessment.
Okay.
Which is now as of June two thousand twenty, uh, part of alteration of terrain's procedures. But yeah, no, we received a, uh, an approval letter from Gloria Andrews up at Alteration of Terrain that she was all set. The permit was ready to be issued as soon as she, uh, hears back from Alteration. I mean, that she was all set. The permit was ready to be issued as soon as she, uh, hears back from Alteration. I mean, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody, any board members have any other questions? Okay, I don't hear any, don't see any hands raised. What about general public? Anybody from the public would like to comment on this? If I, there's a bunch of people on the screen that, um, don't have pictures on. If you, if you would hit your raise your hand button, but other than that, I see, uh, Mr. Joe Lamatina.
Yeah, hello, Joe Lamatina thirteen, Great Hill Drive. I just wanna express my opposition to this. You're literally going, you know, increasing this, the number of units by thirty percent. You're going from twenty-eight units to the thirty-eight, I believe. Um, you know, the traffic on Hershey Lane at this point already is, is horrible in the morning and in the afternoon. Um, adding a whole number of units, an additional thirty percent, I think would have, um, impact on the traffic that's already there on Hershey Lane. Uh, that's my comments.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public would like to comment? Mr. Tom Greeley?
Sorry.
There you go.
Backed on mute. Sorry about that. Okay, yeah, I'm, the reason I was trying to speak before is I'm, I'm the president of the Hershey Green Condo Association. We actually, despite all that snafu on the date thing, we, we were all served, uh, notice. We got a second notice. In fact, I think there's, I counted earlier before the other meeting that took forever. Uh, there were like six or seven folks or eight folks on here, so we were all pretty well represented. Um, we've actually worked with Paul on this and, uh, they've been very good about, you know, hearing, hearing us out and what we wanna do and, um, and what kind of, you know, it, while no one likes development and all that, I mean, we're part of it as well. Uh, but we're on board with what the changes that they're doing, so. Uh, one other thing I just wanted to note, cause I just realized this now. The map does say Hershey Lane. We're actually Green Road, so Hershey's, I mean, Hillside Lane is not Hillside Lane where we are. We're actually Green Road, just for that purposes of that thing, so. Just saying, oh, but that's a minor detail. But anyway, we're, we're, we're good with it and I don't think there's gonna be any kind of legal issue as far as the notification of this meeting from us, anyway. We're not gonna be the ones that would complain, cause we all know about it, so.
Thank, thank you very much.
All right, no problem.
Anybody else?
Eric, just a point of clarification. The original approvals for that lot was fifty-two units. Is that correct, Paul? Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, that's absolutely correct. Fifty-two, there's, uh, an original ten units, the existing Hershey Green units that are, that are already, um, up and, and running. So there, there would be a total of forty-two potential units. We, we are, uh, looking for thirty-eight. So four less than the original approval.
In, in total?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's more than that.
So fifty-two less the ten that are existing would give us forty-two. We are only looking to add thirty-eight more units.
Okay, thank you.
Total of forty-eight versus-
Perfect. Okay, um, I think I need to ask if there's anybody at town hall that would like to speak to this? I don't see anybody coming up to the microphone. Is there anybody else on, on this, uh, call that would like to comment on it? All right, Diane, I'll throw it back to you at this point. Um, so we need to, we need to schedule another meeting, right?
Um, that is correct. We need to have a public hearing on the application to revise the site plan. And we noticed that.
Okay. Val, go ahead. You muted, you muted, Val.
Isn't the next step for the applicant to actually make an application? Cause this is a design review applic- this was a design review meeting.
Yes.
That is correct. I mean, it's, but it's, it's a revision to an approved plan. Is, that's what the application is.
So, so Diane, from a procedural standpoint, um, continue this public hearing or when they submit the application, we accept the application as complete and start a whole new process?
To correct the deficiency, I think we need to reschedule it as a new public hearing and not as a design review. And yes, if there's nec- if it's necessary to make modifications to the application to do so, I'll work with, um, Mr. Carrigan to make sure that it's, um, corrected.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense. Um,
Sense?
Yep, Mr. Carrigan or, or Christian Smith, I guess this will ultimately come down to you. When do you think you will have a full application and supplemental ready?
I had a question, um, and, and that is, is there a specific application, Diane, for, um, site plan amendment?
It really isn't. Um, there is an other box that you can check on the checklist. But so long as the description is clear on what you're looking for. We've had some problems in the last few applications, not with yours, that people have been very vague about what they were applying for. So we really need to have some specis- you need to be specific about it. So, um,
Absolutely.
Work with you, Chris, or, or, um, Alex, if she's gonna be, um, working with you on this, just to make sure the application is correct. And, uh, we need to make sure that the abutters, the last time this came in, we didn't have all the owners notified, and that was an issue. So let's make sure everything is in order. And, um, you know, the deadline for the next meeting technically is the twenty-third of March. But I don't think you have to do much to get to that point. That's my opinion at this point.
Okay.
Okay.
So do any board members have any other questions or concerns, comments? So we don't, don't need to continue this. We will just wait till you make your formal application.
Very good. Thank you very much, everybody.
Great. Thank you all.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, we will move on to the next agenda item. Is, there will be a public hearing for an application, an amended site plan review requested by Walter Chaney Jr., Chaney Property Management Corp. The proposal is to amend the site plan design for the previously approved site plan. The owner has purchased an additional adjacent lot and is proposing to add fifteen residential units. Two units are on the ground floor and will be accessible units, and the other eleven units will be on the new proposed third floor. The lot is located at sixty Exeter Road, tax map U three and U four. Lots eleven, fifteen, and one thirty-eight dash one in the M two A zone. So, much like the previous discussion, um, as we have direction from our attorney that, um, we can go forward, but we're gonna need to re-notify and, and post this, uh, hearing also. Um, Diane, you had a question also about, um, a special permit?
Diane, you're muted.
Diane, you're muted still.
All right, here we go. Forgive me. Um, I did talk to the applicant's engineer today and we discovered that there's actually two parts to this application. It's the approval of the site plan, which was properly noticed. But we also are required under the town zoning ordinance, uh, for the applicant to have a special use permit. Um, so the last time we did this, there were two things. It was a special use permit and the site plan. So in order to correct that, um, we're suggesting that, uh, we, uh, go forward with the, um, application for, uh, the design review if you wish tonight. But we will also have to have an application filed for a special use permit. And, you know, we can schedule that for the meeting next, um, on April thirteenth is the date, which the deadline is the twenty-third.
Okay, thank you. Val, you had a question?
Yes, has the applicant received a variance yet for residential units on the first floor? And if not, why are we, this is, why is this before us at this time?
Question. You do have residential units, but this is the, this is-
M two A.
Can you tell me the, that's a good point, Valerie.
Yeah, so that's my concern over e- even listening to any of this this evening is the applicant doesn't have a variance and in the M two A zone, the, and we talked about this on the conceptual, that the M two A zone would require a variance to have any residential on the, on the first floor, because it's on Exeter Road.
Okay. So I guess there's another step in the process for the applicant. Unless they wanna change the plan.
I'm com- I think I'm, my computer, I think, is skipping. I'm not hearing everything.
So, no, I mean, unless someone can correct me, I reviewed the M two A zoning regulations and it appears that residential is not on the main level if the building is on Exeter Road in the M two A zone.
Okay. And if that's the case, you're absolutely correct. It needs to have a variance. And I just would like to say that this came into us kind of at the eleventh hour. I had no correspondence or contact with the applicant's engineer, which I normally do. And it wasn't until we got the application in hand. And usually I always have meetings in advance of planning board hearings to sort out all of these issues and to be able to identify variances and, you know, what the proper application is that needs to be filed. And this didn't happen with this application, which became a very frustrating situation for us in trying to move this forward. And this is the application that came in with a very, very vague, vague, um, description of what was being proposed. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doucette. I saw you had your hand raised.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Obey it. Any board members have any other questions or comments? I mean, if this, my take on it is if this needs a variance for residential on the first floor, then it's premature to be in front of us with the application.
I agree.
Val?
That's my position. We've never heard applications in the past that would make them conditionable upon an applicant getting a variance. Because obviously if the applicant can't get the variance, then this isn't going to even come before the planning board in the, in, as it's being proposed here.
Right. Right. So I guess, um, I see-
Again, sorry, it's a procedural thing, because, you know, we, we don't, we can't, I don't think we can act on this because they don't have the variance.
Yeah, at this point, it doesn't meet our zoning requirements.
Correct.
Basically, without the variance. Um, um, I see Jamie Bruton with her hand raised. Jamie?
Um, I'm, I'm just agreeing with both of you.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, I see Mike Sevitz on the line. Mike, what, um, is your intention to go for a variance for this or to change the site plans or what's your thoughts?
Um, I thought, we're, we're unclear that there was a variance required, I guess, from our, um, design review that we did last summer. Um, maybe we missed that, but we're unclear about that. So if that's the requirement, then, um, we need to decide whether or not we're going to, uh, move forward with it. Walter's position is that, uh, it would be a good thing to have, um, accessible units on the first floor and that's why he put them there in, in the M two A district. Now, we thought that there could be, um, uh, units on the first floor. But I guess if it, if it does front on one oh eight and that's a stipulation, then, and we need a variance and we fully understand that and, um, we agree a hundred percent that we, we shouldn't be allowed to go forward if we need a variance. As far as the, um, uh, application coming in and not being properly vetted and so forth, we, we disagree with that, but, um, that's beside the point at this point, so.
Probably the day before the meeting.
I did not, Diane.
Hey, hey, guy, Diane, Diane and Mike.
And in the future-
Diane, Diane.
And he didn't, so.
You know what, we were in there last summer.
Hey, hey, we don't need, we don't need to do this right now. It, it, the app, we have the application in front of us. It is what it is.
Right.
Um, so, um, so at this point, we cannot hear this. Are we, um, I guess that's, that's really, I mean, Mike, I guess I don't, I don't, you know, obviously it's not, you know, we're not the ZBA, but I, you know, the, to me, the concept of having handicapped units on the first floor makes a lot of sense. You just need to go through the process to do that, so.
I think I'll just, you know, we'll, uh, I'll talk with Walter about whether or not that's the step or, or he wants to take, or we just remove those and then come forward with the amended site plan.
Absolutely. Okay. So I'm sorry to spring that on you.
No, it's fine.
It is, okay.
If we missed it, we missed it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, so, um, next order of business is new slash old business. Anybody have any newer or old business? Um, I would like to just, I guess on the new business, I'd like to, I see, um, I believe Tim Rosignol has been on this meeting all night. Um, Tim is going to be a new member of the planning board. And, um, for those of you who don't know, my understanding is, and Diane, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that tomorrow is three other potential members, um, who are interested. Um, I think as everybody knows, nobody ran, so, um, Tim won via write-in. The other three write-in candidates, I guess, who are willing to serve, their names are gonna be thrown in the hat tomorrow and a name is gonna be pulled out. And that person, if they accept the challenge, will become part of the planning board. If not, they'll draw another name and, and, and so it'll go.
Okay, and that's it. Tomorrow, we should have word on who that lucky individual is. Thank you.
So Tim, I'd like to say, uh, welcome aboard. Um, I think you probably know that you need to make sure you get sworn in before our next meeting.
Uh, yeah, uh, it's kinda interesting to happen upon this meeting tonight and, uh, figured it was a good opportunity to start getting up to speed. And I will be stopping at the town hall before the end of this week to, uh, get sworn in, so we'll see you all then.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, um, chairman's report, I have nothing. Uh, committee reports, anybody have any committee reports?
Eric, yeah. Uh, no, uh, committee reports, but I just wanna acknowledge, uh, Jamie and Sarah's service to the board. Um, and then also I think the, we should mention there is, will be an opening for an alternate. Jamie or Sarah, if you're listening, if you might wanna sign up as an alternate, that would be great.
Yes.
I, do I get to respond to that?
Yes, go ahead.
No, I, I just wanted to take a minute to thank you, Val, for, um, bringing that up. And, you know, it just so happened that this year during the actual voting time, it was just not a good time for me to, um, write-in campaign or campaign, what have you. But I am definitely still available and willing to work in whatever way is needed, so, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And Val, I need to thank you for, uh, bringing that up, cause I had a note here to do it and I wrote all around it, so I didn't see it. So Jamie and Sarah, I'd like to thank you very much for your, your services. And Jamie, you know, um, there will, there will be a spot, looks like, for, for an alternate if you wanna fill out the application.
I will definitely look into that.
Thank you very much. Um, Diane, do you have anything you, you would like to add? Is there a, uh, anything on your planners' report?
I, the only thing I have is, and I think Sue Jordan sent out a notice that there is gonna be some kind of a, um, workshop coming up from, with the Office of Strategic Initiatives. And I think it's gonna be Zoom. I don't know if there's a filing fee this time around. But, uh, we do encourage especially the new members, uh, Tim. Uh, you might wanna attend that to get some training on the role of the planning board and, uh, various responsibilities and so forth. And they're usually very well, uh, worth the time. So, and we will pay for any registration fee if there is one. So I wanted to just that, throw that out there.
Diane?
Welcome.
Anything else that anybody would like to add? I will entertain any motion to adjourn. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who made the motion. I heard a second.
It was me, Jamie.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Jane, any discussion, you guys want to hang around longer tonight? All right, so we'll go through uh Mikhail Zahoric.
Aye.
Bill Doucette.
Aye.
Scott Blackstone.
Aye.
Jamie Bruton.
Aye.
Val Shelton.
Aye.
Jane Ford. And Eric Bottomen, I vote aye also. Motion passes unanimously, we are officially adjourned, thank you all, see you next month.